Good morning, everyone. Appreciate your attendance for this Tuesday, the 14th day of July 2020. This is the Weber County Board of Commissioners. We're glad to welcome everybody in the audience as well as those listening online with our Zoom connection. I'm Commissioner Gage Fror. To my left, Commissioner Scott Jenkins. To my right, Commissioner Jim Harvey. We will start today with a pledge of allegiance from Ashley Toman and then an invocation by Tammy Adalot. I see Tammy here. And then thought of the day, Commissioner Jenkins. So let's go to that point and we'll go to public comments after that. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Please repeat with me. I pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Tammy, you're up. Tammy? Good timing.
Our dear heavenly Father, grateful to be gathered today as property owners and as people interested in Weber County and the affairs that occur here. We're grateful for those that work hard to ensure our freedom and to make everyone aware of what may be going on within Weber County. Heavenly Father, we pray for the necessary guidance to be able to continue to allow Weber County to operate the way that it needs to and to be able to continue to serve the citizens that are residing here. We give you thanks for the many blessings that we have and are especially grateful to those who continue to sacrifice and serve on our behalf. When we say these things, in the name of thy son, Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen. Commissioner Jenkins?
So last Friday, I wasn't here, but we had a protest here at the Weber Center out in front. And as I was thinking about that, you know, that's one of the great things we can do in this country is we can protest without fear of reprisal, without fear of somebody coming after you and throwing you in jail. And that's a big deal. We don't understand sometimes how big of a deal that is. And you watch the news and you watch other countries where citizens of the country, they disappear and they go places, you don't know what's happening to them, and the government reacts. And it's important that we realize this is one of our, not only a gift that we have, but it's a responsibility that if we don't like what government's doing, it's our responsibility to show up and protest and attend these meetings and talk about why we don't agree with what's happening. That's very important. And I just wanted to off that as my thought of the day today, that it's important that we don't become apathetic and just sit back and let government control us. We should control government. And it's very important, I say that, and I have a great deal of respect for these folks that I don't necessarily agree with them all, but it doesn't matter that I agree with them. That's not the point. The point is they have the right to come here and put pressure on their elected officials, and we should feel the pressure. And it's important that this is allowed to happen. This is what makes our country a great country. And I feel bad that it gets carried away in other areas where they feel like they need to burn cars and do all this interruption and commit crimes. That I don't agree with. And it makes me feel bad when you watch in other areas where people are being shot, you know, last weekend in Chicago. I think there was 64 people shot and 14 people killed. Well, that's not right, and that has to be stopped. But peaceful protest is very important, and I just stand up for that today and want everybody to remember this is important that we allow that to continue to happen because that's what makes us such a great country.
Great thought, Commissioner. I agree with you 100%. Commissioner Harvey and I were actually here during that protest, and I was impressed by the behavior of the people, of the protesters. They were, you know, well organized. They didn't come with the intent of harming or causing any damage. And from what I could see, came off without a hitch. And I agree with you, that's their right, and we never need, should never lose that right to protest. So thank you very much.
You bet.
So let's go to public comments, if we could. Anyone that would like to come up and address the commissioners, please do that now. We'd ask that you limit it to three minutes. Anybody would like to come forward? If you just state your name, we'd appreciate that. We know you, still state your name.
Good morning, commissioners. It is indeed a pleasure to be with you. I'm Lori Brinkerhoff, 6205 West, 4700 South, out in Hooper. I watch you each and every week. So thank you for broadcasting these meetings, even if I have an interruption, as we brought our students home early on in March. You know, the fact that they're archived, we're able to watch later in the day, so thank you for the transparency. I just have to tell you my deep respect and appreciation for the way that you've conducted yourselves throughout this pandemic. It has been stressful on all levels, and your staff, the professionalism through the elections, your support staff, the meetings, the way business has proceeded. I have to say, I've really grown to love you and have great respect, great respect. I don't know why Commissioner Jenkins and Commissioner Fror, you saved the best for last, but I appreciate your service and the camaraderie, the good feelings. You know, there's a couple, a couple tents, votes a couple weeks ago, and I appreciated the fact that those were tense votes and that you left as friends, your unified body, and that speaks volumes for Weber County. So I'll get right to what I wanted to speak on. The item, it was tabled last week, but the Weber Cares Program. I have looked at that document. I don't have it in front of me because that requires I wear glasses, and then my glasses fog up. But I want you to know, I've looked through that with a fine-tooth comb, and how would I think the fine handling you have on the Weber Cares Program. I believe the way you're implementing this, Holland did a great job last week explaining the parameters, $11.1 million, that you are retaining 90% of that, allowing 10% of that to the nine participating cities. I think that's the only way that this could judiciously and timely be implemented at this time. As we know, those cities throughout Weber County just may not have the boots in the ground to get this money into the hands of the businesses. And I think that is critical, that they get this into the hands of the businesses by August 1st. So I, once again, I have to tell you, I approve this. I think it's the wisest action, and it helps the citizens of Weber County. And that is the most important, important aspect of this. I have to say, it kind of comes close to home. I have a son and a daughter-in-law who work in industries that you could consider them unemployed right now. They work independently. And my daughter-in-law was working on a world stage. She was going around the world doing hair and makeup. She hasn't worked for six months. She's enjoying being at home with her three children, but we've seen huge career changes, life changes. And so thank you for this program. Hopefully, it's short term, but it puts that patch for the protection of what we need for households right now. So thank you, and I approve of everything you're doing.
Thank you, Lori. Appreciate those nice remarks and appreciate the CARES Act. This really was a huge team effort by our staff here at the county. The mayors and the cities got involved because realized, they realized the importance of putting their money with the county money to really double the impact on their businesses. And we made the policy decision when the CARES Act money first came forward that first and foremost, we wanted to put this money in the hands of our small businesses, businesses in general after that, the ones that had been harmed by COVID-19. And for the staff to stand up this program, to put this CARES Act internet application in place, totally amazed me that they were able to do it and very few complaints from the public that we haven't been able to solve almost instantaneously. And so I think as of last night, when I left around five, little after five, we had 200-plus applications on that, and that was just about a week into the program. So we're going to re-market again. We're going to push this out. We would like, we would like 2,000 applications in, that we could have in our database. If we can't fund them this time, we'd love to fund them our next go-around. But that's our goal, is to push this money out. The county will come last in terms of funding, if there's any left. But it's more important that we get this out working in the community, and we appreciate folks like you spreading the word.
My only concern in this is, I always look at the caution, you know, of obviously, will there be audits, you know? And obviously, there is this section, I want to say, I don't have it in front of me, but that they're required to keep receipts, do the documentation. We never obviously want to put out funds that cannot be accounted for, but I know your staff will do that, and all the staff. So there again, thank you.
Thank you very much, Lori. Commissioners, any comments on that? Thank you. Appreciate you being, any additional comments from the public? We'd love to hear from you now. Kristi, anybody on Zoom that's requested a comment?
No, I haven't received anything.
Great.
I haven't received anything.
All right. Thank you. Okay. Commissioners, let's move to our consent items, if we could. Let's go to Consent Item F1, Request for Approval of Warrants, 2888 through 2903 and 450707 through 45867, in the amount of $728,091.86. Two, Request for Approval of Purchase Orders, in the amount of $69,005.99. Three, Request for Approval of the Minutes for the Meeting Held on July 7, 2020. Four, Request from Human Resources for Approval to Surplus Training Supplies. And Five, Request from Human Resources for Approval to Surplus File Cabinets. Those are our five consent items. Commissioners, comments, questions, before we go to Ricky?
None for me, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Ricky?
Good morning. This morning, or this week, we issued eight purchase orders for $69,000. Two-thirds of that amount, or $44,000, is for the Homeland Security area, and that is to purchase hazardous material air monitoring equipment. 14% or $10,000 is for the transfer station, and that will go towards hazardous waste disposal. As far as checks go, we issued 177 checks for $728,000, spread quite across a whole bunch of different categories. So the largest amount is 15% or $106,000. That was an escrow release for Trappers Ridge. 9% or $63,000 is for our dispatch. That will go to, or went to telecommunications equipment and service, as well as some professional services. We had two amounts at 7% or just over $50,000. One was for the garage demolition, the conduit, moving the conduit, as well as some landscaping services. And then one for the jail, which includes food, medical services, building maintenance and improvements. Two items at 6% or just over $40,000. One is for lobbying services for the county, and one is for the library, which includes books and materials, building maintenance and utilities. Then two items at 5% or $39,000, one for the attorney, which would replace their cubicles. And then for the transfer station, disposal costs. That's it.
Thank you, Ricky. Questions? Comments? If not, I entertain a motion.
I'd like to comment, just amend on that.
Go ahead.
Well, Ricky brought up lobbying services that we pay for. When I ran for this position, one of the things I talked about was doing away with those lobbying services, because you and I, Commissioner Fror, are ex-legislators, and I felt like we could do it without them. Well, turns out, we actually probably used our lobbyists more than we would have in the past. And as it turned out, you and I spent a great deal of time, well, we all spent a great deal of time there. I don't want to take anything away from Commissioner Harvey. But you and I spent a great deal of time down there raising funds, and we were able to raise some substantial funds for Weber County this year through our efforts. Now, we've lost some of those, now that they've redone the budget, but I just want the citizen to know that that's the change, you know? We just, we ended up using our lobbyists more, so we didn't alter that contract. We've left it the way it is, and we actually have spent more time with him because he's keeping his track of what's happening down there daily, and that's just what it takes. So anyway, I just wanted to comment on that. I felt like I owed it to the citizens to say that, because I actually ran against it. And with that, I'd make a motion to approve the consent items.
Thank you for that. Motion?
Second with a comment?
Go ahead.
Isn't it wonderful, no matter what chapter of life we're in, we can continue learning?
That's true.
And that was a second, I'm assuming?
Second with just that little comment, yeah?
Yeah, I'm going to call that a message, so, okay.
I got the message.
It's all, it's just how we communicate, that's it.
All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. Thank you. Let's go to Action Items G1, Report from Children's Justice Center on Victims of Crime Act Grant. Voca, Roberta Dustin is with us. Roberta, welcome.
Good morning, gentlemen.
Hi there.
How are you today?
Good.
As part of our Victims of Crime Act grant that we have, sorry, I know you probably can't hear me very well, so I'll do that. We're required to report to you folks a couple of times a year about what's happening with that grant. We did meet previously in an advisory board meeting, and I had provided the first report to Commissioner Fror several months ago, so this would be our second one for the year. We are just in the process right now of closing out the first year of a two-year grant cycle with them and starting up a new cycle. The new grant funding will be about $243,000 for this coming year. Will be primarily spent for client services, victim services for therapy, et cetera, staff, salaries and benefits, and then some training, if we're actually able to get them to that training. I just got another cancellation on one that has already been canceled in the past, so we'll see what happens there. We're also using, or hoping to use, a portion of some funding that we didn't use in our last grant cycle. We're going to request as part of a match on some funding that we've used from the state from that grant to replace our recording, reporting equipment. And that was actually in the original budget for us for this year, because we expected that that might happen. This last quarter, we've been able to supply 240 hours of direct therapy for kids. It was down a little bit, of course, because of COVID and some of the clients didn't want to go in and meet with their therapist, but they were able to do some virtual therapy with them via computer, and that was really quite successful. So we did fairly well in keeping the numbers up after the first little bit of people not knowing how they wanted to handle that. So, did you have any questions about our grant?
Any questions for Roberta on this? Voca?
You've done a great job. I remember that when that was getting started up, Roberta, and that was, you've done a wonderful job with that. It's, you've represented the county and those you serve well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for that. We appreciate you keeping us up to speed on these grants and what the CJC's doing, and appreciate the efforts up there. Okay, does that conclude your report?
It does, but I'm again on your agenda right after.
Yep, so just stay right where you are. So let's go to Agenda Item 2, Request for Approval of a Contract By and Between Weber County and the State of Utah for CJC General Operations Allocation, Amendment Number 7 to State Contract Number 16230. Roberta, you want to explain that to us?
Yes, they actually were going to draft a new contract this year, and then there was kind of a little discussion going back and forth on scope of work, so they decided to go ahead and extend with another amendment to the contract, and then we'll reevaluate for next year. Our contract is based on what's allocated from the legislature, and it's broken out amongst the different centers across the state. There's about 20 to 25 with some remote sites. And those are based, really, there's a base just to have your center open, and then the rest of it is determined by the number of interviews that are conducted. A lot of the centers are down quite a bit, given the circumstance. We actually were very lucky that our allocation went up $8,000 this year, so that was, that was nice, pending that something else doesn't happen as we go along and they reevaluate those. One of the other things that has been a benefit for Weber County is we had underspent on our budget and had another area where we could defer some funds, so that will be a substantial savings this year for Weber County, substantial on our terms, not on your terms, probably in the area of about $25,000, so. And their response was, yes, go ahead and spend that down and just let them know that we let you do that in case we get in a bind later. So that's kind of where we're at right now, the same staffing kind of thing, nothing, really any changes on anything like that.
Thank you. Roberta? Questions, commissioners?
None.
Okay.
None. Okay, I entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'll make the motion that we approve the contract as was presented today by Ms. Dustin.
Okay, that would be Amendment Number 7 to the state contract. Thank you. All those in favor, say aye.
Hold on, I'll second then.
Thank you. All right, we do have a second now.
Ooh, a lot of grain in that cereal this morning.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. Thank you. Okay, Roberta, you're still with us.
I'll bother you one more time, and then I'll go away.
This would be Amendment Number 3 to the Contract 18252, the state of Utah. This is for the forensics interviewer expenses.
Yes, and this is, I believe, our third year, no, fourth year of this. And it pays primarily for a full-time forensic interviewer that we have and does some match to some Voca funding for an additional part-time forensic interviewer. That has been, I was going to, I don't want to use the term contentious, there has been a lot of dialogue as to whether or not Voca funding could be used for that. They did give us a two-year grant on that. I don't know that it will be renewed in the future. This is the same exact amount that we had last year, and really no changes.
So it stays the same as what we talked about last year, then?
Yes, sir.
Great, thank you. Okay. Questions, commissioners? If not, I entertain a motion.
I'd make a motion that we approve the Amendment Number 3 to Contract 18252 from the state of Utah for forensic interviewer.
Thank you. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. Thank you. Thank you, Roberta, for being with us.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, Roberta.
So let's go to Action Item 4, Request for Approval of a Contract By and Between Weber County and Night Irrigation Group on 12th Street Project, allowing night irrigation group to perform Segment 3 to avoid impacts to the irrigation system. Mr. Gary Myers?
Good morning, commissioners. As you're aware, 12th Street's had a few change orders. One of them was, we eliminated some work that our contractor was going to do and allowed the night irrigation group to perform that work, install that work, to better benefit and suit themselves of how their irrigation system works. Part of that, what we wanted to do was establish an agreement to allow them to reside within our right-of-way out there. They've got a portion of their irrigation facility that crosses underneath 12th Street that serves a few of the residents that take water from this irrigation line. And as part of that agreement, it allows them to own and maintain their own improvements there in the right-of-way. And that's what I have for you, for your consideration today. Any questions?
Questions for Mr. Myers? To own and maintain their own?
Their own system, correct. So they-
In the right-of-way.
In the right-of-way, yeah. They installed their own system, and they self-inspected and did the work themselves. And so we wanted them to maintain and own their system there.
Okay. Questions?
So Gary, the question I have is, why do we have to have a contract with them to say that? We, there's a lot of people who own infrastructure underneath our roads.
Great question, Commissioner. So as part of this work, we're paying them back for the work that they did. Having that contract in place allows us to issue them payment. We've gone through a little bit of back and forth of them submitting their tax ID number in order to issue that payment, and this allows us to finalize that and get them compensated.
Great, thank you.
You bet.
So we paid for it, but they performed the work?
They actually paid for it and installed it and then performed it. We backed those pay items out of our contract, so our contractor didn't perform, and we'll compensate them for the work that they did.
Right, okay, got it, makes sense.
Exactly.
All right, that way, and I'm assuming because they've done that, we don't have any liability issues as far as coming back for that contract, for that 12th Street contract?
Exactly, exactly.
Okay, all right. Okay, questions? Commissioners, additional? I'd entertain.
All right, so I'd make a motion that we approve this. This is not the first time we've heard this. Some time ago, we knew that this was taking place and that this group had contacted us and wanted to do it on their own, since it was their ditch. And of course, we had no issue with that, like, if you want to, go ahead.
Absolutely.
Yeah, so we had no issue with that, and this is just formalizing it. So I'd make a motion that we approve the contract to the Weber County Night Irrigation Group.
Thank you. We have a motion.
Second?
And we have a second. Place a motion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Chair votes aye, motion carries. Thank you, Gary.
Thanks, gentlemen.
All right, let's move to Agenda Item 5, Request for Approval of an Interlocal Agreement By and Between Weber County and South Ogden Community Development and Renewal Agency for the City Center Community Reinvestment Project Area. Holland Willbanks, I think she will be presenting by Zoom. There you are. Holland, go ahead.
Thank you, and I apologize, I can't be there today, as we've had a little bit of sickness in our house, and so we are practicing all of the guidelines that we've been asked to. However, this is a contract that's been worked on for a number of months, and I'm really excited to see it come before you guys. This gives an opportunity for South Ogden to have a community reinvestment area, which overlaps their opportunity zone for the most part. So it's a really great opportunity for them to promote growth residentially and commercially. We've worked closely with Ogden, South Ogden City. Matt Dixon, I believe, is there today as well, so if you guys have any specific questions for him, he'll be happy to address those. However, I would like to mention that this is one of the contracts that has gone through our process of the finance committee to review. So we've had an opportunity to review it with our comptroller, our attorneys. I think that that gives us a higher level of understanding of what the contract does to, how it impacts the budget. It's a 75% participation rate with Weber County over a 20-year period with a $4 million cap. So we have the opportunity to support their development for the next 20 years as they grow both residentially and commercially. So I'm happy to take any answers, and I'm happy to have Matt Dixon answer any questions as well.
Thanks, Holland. Questions for Holland?
None for Ms. Willbanks, from me, Mr. Chair.
Appreciate it. Anything, Scott? Matt, did you want to come up?
I don't need to, Commissioner, unless you have questions, but I'm always happy to.
Okay. Well, just any, anything that you'd like to add to that presentation?
Holland did a great job. South Ogden's had, for the public's benefit, the area we're talking about is roughly between 36th and 40th Street, in the Riverdale Road, Washington Boulevard area, as well as 40th Street. It's been on the city's radar for many years to try and find ways to revitalize that area. If you drive through that area, you know it's a lot of older development, a lot of small parcels of land, and so when you're trying to- And so when you're trying to do any kind of a meaningful redevelopment project, it takes a lot of effort to try and consolidate property and try to get some synergy going. And with, as Holland mentioned, with the federal designation of an opportunity zone in that area, we felt like it was a good time to try and add some additional tools into our, into our mix so that we could go out and really try to, to do some things. As you know, commissioners, we have a high number of folks every day that leave the Weber County area for employment. And one of the focuses within this area is to try and find, we'd like to eventually see up to 100,000 square feet of new commercial office. It's a big goal, it's lofty, but we want our residents to be able to live and, and try to work right here in this area, in Weber County and South Ogden City. We also contemplate, you know, it's a mixed-use area, so we're hoping to see housing as well as commercial and retail combined. We have a great vision for the area in our general plan. Last few years, we've put together a form-based code to try and, and make it from the development community side, an easier process. And with the county's participation in this project, we think it will give us all the tools available to really go out and, and try to see some things happen. So appreciate the commissioner's support. Holland and her team, as she mentioned, this is, this has been many months of great discussion and negotiation to, to put this together. And so we're, we're grateful for your support, and I'm happy to answer any other questions.
Thank you, Matt, and we appreciate your patience with this. I know this, there was a lot of questions, a lot of dialogue that went back and forth between the finance committee as this RDA was, as this was approved. You know, we wish you the best of luck. Hopefully, this will give you some necessary funding in place to go out and see some redevelopment in those areas in South Ogden that, quite frankly, are great, great real estate locations. They just need somebody to come in and partner and make sure that they can put something there that's going to benefit us all for the future. I have faith that you guys can do that, so. Thank you very much. Questions or comments?
The comment I'd make is, we've been watching this go along here for, oh, several years, but in earnest, the last six, eight months, as you've got this narrowed down, your scope, and we were involved with negotiations on what we felt like we could give as a county, and I'm very pleased. I think 75%, 20 years is, it's good, it's good. And we wish South Ogden great success on this. We hope this works out very well for you, Matt, and we, you're a value, valuable city and the county, and we want nothing but the best for you and for the city, and so congratulations. And with that, I, I'm prepared to make a motion.
Go ahead.
I'd make a motion that we approve the agreement between Weber County and South Ogden City for a development and renewal of their city and the reinvestment area.
Thank you. We have a motion.
Second with comment?
Go ahead.
This, you know, Mr. Dixon, wonderful, I'm glad that you're moving forward. I've been traveling right in that area my entire life. I respect and appreciate that South Ogden, through what they have there, connects all the west out south to the east of Ogden with 40th and 36th Street. The traffic that, the car counts that are on 36th Street and on 40th respectively are huge. There's a lot of opportunity there, not to mention what you have coming in off Riverdale Road and Washington Boulevard and those areas there as well. Plus, the one thing that I always loved, and what comes to mind still, is Christmas time, coming down off that hill, looking all the way out to North Ogden and Pleasant View from there. The vistas, if you get the elevations and doing some of those proposed projects that you're speaking to, are, I've not seen them anywhere else in the county. By the time you hit North Ogden, you come down into North Ogden, you're on the flat. But right there, it's a great vista that just seems to magically overlook everything to the north. It's a wonderful place. I, with your team, with you and Mayor Porter, your counsel, they're very, they're great people, forward thinkers, and I have a lot of confidence that you, through this now unique environment, working with Holland and Chris Royball, our Northern Utah Economic Team, will do very well. And this is a very fair deal, and my, in fact, it's probably, for me, it's, you guys did very well, almost a little more than what I would normally go. But I think I shared that with you probably six, eight months ago where I thought we'd landed. So you got a little, a little more, but it's okay. So I'll, those are my comments.
Thank you. Holland, before we place a vote, do you have anything else, Dan?
No, I do appreciate the relationship we, that Matt Dixon and the mayor of South Ogden have had through this process and the team that's been able to review all of this. I feel like this is a great opportunity to develop that area, as Commissioner Harvey mentioned, in ways that probably couldn't without the incentive. We've seen how competitive it is across the nation, and Utah's no different. So I think this is a great opportunity for them to grow as well, so I'm excited to put this in place.
Thank you. We have a motion, and we have a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Chair votes aye, motion carries. Thank you, Matt.
Thank you.
Give our best to the mayor, best of luck.
So Commissioner Farron?
Go ahead.
I would like to mention in this whole thing, I'd like to give you thanks. There was a little bit of distance separating you and I.
There was.
And we, we agreed on something at the last minute and brought this right in, and I appreciate that, I want you to know it.
Well, I appreciate that. Now, that's, one thing we do, we're good at, is listening to the dialogue and coming to reasonable ground. That's what we do.
That's what we do. It was very good, and I appreciate you, I want you to know it.
But I, I still feel that the spot we ended up with was a fair compromise for the city and a fair compromise for the county.
I agree.
So, anyway, very happy we ended up there. Okay, let's go to agenda item six, request for approval of a contract by and between Weber County and Sunrise Engineering to provide engineering services to design a storm drain outfall, drain outfall. Ashley, you're back with us?
Yes, yes. So for your consideration is this contract between Weber County and Sunrise Engineering. With the purchasing department's help, we put out a request for proposal to design and provide surveying services to the county for this storm drain outfall that'll take water out of the Eden Acres subdivision area where we've seen some flooding issues in the past and, and discharge it in a more acceptable location. And so we received proposals, we had a review team look through them and score those, and, and we, the result was Sunrise Engineering was the, the best proposal. And so they provided us more information on their, their schedule and costs, and we've looked at that. We even actually took the surveying, we talked to our surveying department, and they've agreed to perform those surveying services to help us save money on this, on this project. And so that's underway. And we're also looking at, as much as possible, the engineering department performing some of the outreach, some of maybe the more custom engineering approaches, and let the consultant handle more of the design and analysis to try and coordinate the efforts and, and save money on this contract.
Great, thank you. And I think this is an issue that we did talk about at a recent work session, so this is not new to us. We understand about the need for this storm drain design up in Eden Acres. So with that, questions, commissioners?
Question I have, Mr. Chair, for Ashley, is why are we involved in this? Could you explain that, and why is this not being done by previous developers who worked in this area?
I believe what it's looking at is taking an overall perspective of the area, that it's not so much the flooding from the development that's causing the issue, it's runoff from surrounding areas, and some of the complexity with the irrigation ditches that are in the area. So it kind of requires, I think, the county to, to be the manager of this as opposed to putting it on the development.
So will our stormwater fees pay for this?
Yes, this will be an impact fee.
That's kind of where I was hoping to go with that. Is, you know, we've recently set up this stormwater account, and we're looking at this whole process of stormwater in the county, and this is part of that. Thanks, Ashley.
You're welcome.
I was trying to lead you there, though.
I'll remember for next time. I'm sorry.
Yeah, and that's a great question, commissioners. I understand this, and I'm somewhat familiar with that area up there. This is not one particular, one specific subdivision. This is the hillside that basically is that Wolf Creek hillside that follows from Wolf Creek over into the Browning Ranch area, then wraps around into the, actually, the Middle Fork area where it ends. And what happens in the winter because of the sheet flow that comes off of there with ice melt, it impacts all those subdivisions, which I think there's three or four there, at least three or four, plus some other homes as that, as that flow comes off. So I think this is a, an opportunity, and Gary Myers could correct me, this is an opportunity to try to save some of the flow going into those areas, into the homes. That's really, really not a subdivision issue, it comes off the, the hillside.
Yeah, that's-
Is that how you understand it, Ashley?
That's the feedback. I've met with a handful of the residents up there and, and heard their experiences, what they've seen through the different storms. Some of them, a lot of the problems have been those winter storms.
Right.
January, December, where the ground's saturated or frozen, and then they've seen these flows come through their neighborhood and, and the challenge of getting that spread out.
I think that's, that's exactly when it hits, is the January or February thaw, February thaws that we get with the snow and then the ice, and it, when it starts melding, the amount of water that can come off of those hills would probably surprise a lot of us.
Yeah.
Unless you've seen it.
I haven't.
And it overloads the, and a lot of that goes into the canals and the irrigation, but they're not large enough to accommodate the amount of water. That's what happens, so. All right, additional questions? Commissioner Harvey?
None.
Really? Okay. Commissioner Jenkins, additional questions?
None.
If not, I'd entertain a motion.
I'd make that motion that we approve the contract between Weber County and Sunrise Engineering for engineering services on the outflow, flow of drain that we just described and talked about.
Thank you. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We do have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. Thank you, Ashley, for that.
Thank you, commissioners.
Let's go to agenda item seven, request for discussion and/or action on final approval of Fenster Farms Phase Two subdivision, nine-lot subdivision, including acceptance of publicly dedicated road at 560 North Street. Tammy, you're up. Thank you.
Hi, good morning, how are you?
Good morning.
Thank you.
I'm going to make a slight correction, this is actually Phase Three that's before you. So we came before you, I think about a month ago, with Phase Two, and that received-
Okay, I was going to ask you if we made a mistake on that Phase Two before.
No.
So this is actually, read the correction, this is Phase Three.
Phase Three.
Thank you.
Phase Three, this does include nine lots, it's a little over 10 acres. This actually includes creation of a couple of new county roads, as well as continuation of an existing county road through this subdivision located in the A2 Zone. All departments have, have signed off on this. This request for approval also includes an improvement agreement for about $85,000 in there. Do you have any questions for me at this time?
Questions for Tammy?
No.
If not, I'd entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'll make that motion that we approve the contract by and between Weber County and Fenster, or, excuse me, the Fenster Farms, isn't it?
Yes.
Fenster Farms.
Mm-hmm.
Phase Three.
Phase Three. Be clear, Phase Three, just a question for legal. As we have advertised this as number two, are we, are we okay to, because of that correction, number three?
I guess the question I have, with the noticing that goes out to adjoining property owners, was that correct?
That is done for preliminary approval only, which was done back in April of last year.
So with this, I mean, it doesn't require exactness. I mean, it would be, do we get the, the essence of the project there, that the public would know that, what project we're talking about, so that they do have an interest in attending and speaking to that, that they would have that information. I personally don't have an issue with having it be in Phase Two.
Okay. The packet does say Phase Three that was uploaded along with the agenda.
So the links would have updates to the correct information. So I think there's sufficient information out there to have given adequate notice to the public.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to make sure the public was, was advised correctly. Thank you, Mr. Crockett.
For that, so we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
And we have a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Thank you. Chair votes aye, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Tammy? Let's go to action item eight, request for approval of the policy governing the distribution of CARES Act funds to small businesses under Weber CARES Grant Program. Mr. Chris Crockett.
Thank you. This item was tabled last, from last week. As was discussed last week and was touched upon earlier in the meeting, the state of Utah has received money from the federal government through the Coronavirus Aid, Relief, and Economic Security Act. The state has distributed a portion of that money to Weber County and its municipalities through a population-based formula. CARES Act funds are, the purpose of those funds are intended to cover necessary expenditures and losses incurred due to the COVID-19 public health emergency. If it's all right with the commissioners, I would like to just read the first three sections of the purpose of this policy, because I think it outlines exactly what we're trying to do, and I think it would be very informative to the public. It says, "Small businesses throughout Weber County have experienced severe economic hardship due to the impact of COVID-19. Reimbursing small businesses for the cost of business interruptions is a necessary expenditure in permitted use of CARES Act funds under 601D of the Social Security Act." I think that's important to note, that what Weber County is doing with these funds to help aid small businesses is a permitted use of these federal dollars. Weber County has established the Weber CARES Coronavirus Relief Fund. Weber CARES will provide economic relief in the form of grants to small businesses that can demonstrate a negative impact due to the COVID-19 public health emergency. The purpose of this policy is to outline the process for receiving and objectively evaluating grant, grant applications to ensure that any assistance provided under Weber CARES are necessary expenditures and satisfy the requirements of the CARES Act and any other applicable law. It was important to us, as we went through and we've established this program, to have a governing policy that we can refer to when reviewing applications. This ensures that they're objectively reviewed and that all applicants have an equal opportunity to access these funds if they meet the funding criteria. It reduces the, the amount of risk by having a policy to show that we are being stewards over these funds, and that we, we acknowledge that there's a great responsibility with that. And so we present this policy for your consideration and approval, and to begin the process of this, this really great program that is happening.
Thank you for that, Chris, and I appreciate that, and I appreciate your work as we've worked very diligently to stand this program up. We couldn't have done this without your legal expertise, as well as the, your common knowledge you bring to the program as we talked about the application process, as we talked about the review process, and as we talked about the audit process, all three important steps to make sure that, at the end of the day, this policy that we are about to approve meets the intent and really meets what we do as, in fact, on the ground, which is our CARES Act Zoom Grant Program. And without your help, we wouldn't be where we are today, so I just want to thank you. Again, I'm very optimistic. We'll see where we are in two weeks, at the end of the month, as we accumulate these and start. I'm excited to get those first checks out to businesses. They need it, the people we've heard from are very excited, and I'm excited to get this money that we now have in the hands of the people that need it the most, so. Thank you very much. And for all those people, John Bond, you're, I don't know if you're listening online, the people that have worked on this, have done a great job.
And thank you, and thank you to the commissioners, because you've been right there with us.
Yeah, thank you.
Very much.
Okay, comments, commissioners?
I'm encouraged by this. This time that's taken since we've announced clearly shows that the direction the team has headed in is right for businesses. We are getting comments from actually all over the state, how well we're doing as compared to others.
to others that are still navigating the way through it, and I'm really impressed with our team of people. It's just been great. Appreciate the leadership that's been shown here. Thank you.
Absolutely. All right, I'm ready for a motion.
I'd make a motion, Mr. Chair, that we approve the CARES Act Funds and the Grant Program for Distribution.
Thank you. We do have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
And we have a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 And Q, Chair votes aye, motion carries. Thank you. Let's go to our last Agenda Item, Request for Approval of a Contract By and Between Weber County and the Wasatch Widgeons Association to Provide Waterfowl Nest Structures, Predator Management, and Removal of Invasive Species at the King Fishery Wetlands Area of Observation Park. Mr. Todd Ferrari, would you like to explain what that's about?
This is a renewal of a past stewardship agreement. So we have an area within Observation Park, Observatory Park, that is really a biofilter. It was created when the landfill was made to help purify the water before it got to the river. Obviously, that landfill was put in decades before people realized that you don't put garbage in a river. So it was actually way before its time. It has created an interesting wetlands area. This is a no-money exchange agreement with this 501(c)(3), so they do invasive species. We have frag mighty like you wouldn't believe down there. They do a lot of that work. They worked with us putting in a boardwalk across there for the public. There's a viewing tower, and they put duck boxes up every year, elevated. We had 244 eggs from wood ducks last year. Just a great partnership with Parks and Rec. We do not have a wetland specialist by any means in Parks and Rec. So it gives us a little more bandwidth than we would have. And to be quite honest with you, we do work with them a couple times a year. The rest of the time, they handle it on their own. So it's a great deal for us.
Sounds like a great deal. Questions, comments? Commissioner Harvey, this is in your portfolio.
I just, I remember this, this group when they first approached, and they just, they said, is there anywhere, anywhere we could go? This was a group that cared about waterfowl and protection, and, and they're, they're very creative in the way that they build those, those duck boxes, duck houses, things. They're just, they're, it's a great group. It's been, and then, of course, you turn them on to Todd, and Todd just takes care of the rest every time.
And they've been great. Even with our ramp program, which unfortunately was canceled due to COVID, they do a youth fair that surrounds our pond with conservation groups. DNR is involved, and they spearhead that as well. As you know, we have over 4,400 acres in parks, and without partnerships like this, that, that's hard for us to, you know, especially today. You know, we're running at about 30% of staff right now. And so these partnership groups make it, make us able to do our job much better. So we're hugely appreciative to them.
Perfect. Thank you for that explanation.
With that, Mr. Chair, I'm ready to make a motion.
Please.
I'll make a motion that we absolutely approve the contract by and between Weber County and the Wasatch Widgeons, Widgeons Association for Nest Structures.
Thank you. We have an absolute motion. Do we have an absolute second?
Oh, you're, do you have an absolute second?
All right. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. Thank you, Todd.
We're absolutely.
Appreciate your work out there, too.
I don't get in the way with no arbitrary questions. Thank you.
Okay, that brings us to the end of our action items.